Good evening, everyone. I'm Shane Blazer, the mayor. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today is February 15th and it is 6:01 PM. As you can see, our clerk is absent at the moment, but today is election day, and that's kind of her big responsibility. So she hopefully will join us again. And Ms. Evenson is online because she also has a very large task of election responsibilities today also. So if you see her drop off, she's gone to take care of those responsibilities. Just to let you know if you see her leave. And the clerk is joining us. So we do have all the persons present with Ms. Evenson online. We'll let the clerk light up. I did say if you had to go running out of here, it's because of an election emergency. Same with Sherry. No, you've got responsibilities today. I am unable to sign now. We can skip it. Yes, she's online. Okay, oh yeah. Of course, that's Murphy's Law. Okay, so our next item of business is to pledge allegiance and a silent prayer in lieu of invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on. Okay, next item of business is reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on January 18th. What are your wishes? So a motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Let's use the voice.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Matt. Tom. Ms. Evenson.
Aye.
Hi, I am... Ms. Catnaugh.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
And Mr. Bemke.
Aye.
That motion carried, eight a's, zero nays. We're on to item number five is discuss and consider for confirmation of Mayor Blazer appointment of Derek Budsburg to the position of wastewater superintendent as recommended by the Human Resource Committee at its meeting on February 10th, 2022. What are your wishes? Any questions? I did provide a memo.
I'll make a motion to confirm Mayor Blazer's appointment of Derek Budsburg to the position of wastewater superintendent.
He's also here should you have any questions. Maybe you might want to come... Well, is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
So a second. Derek, if you want to come up and say hi for those that don't maybe know you already.
Hello, everyone. Just want to say thank you for making this happen, and I look forward to serving the city of Wisconsin Rapids as the new superintendent.
Anybody have any questions for Derek? Okay, Tom, you good? Okay.
I did have the opportunity for a few years being on the wastewater commission when Derek was attending the meetings there too to work with him and that, and I enjoyed his input and that and being there. And he's going to be a good addition, I think, to the staff out there. And so welcome aboard. I guess we've got a vote yet, but...
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks, Tom.
I agree. All right, seeing no... Oh, go ahead.
I'll just say I was part of the panel that selected the new wastewater superintendent, and it was an easy decision for us, Derek's intimate knowledge of the plant and his involvement in getting the plant to where it's at today was, again, made it an easy decision for the panel. So thanks, Derek.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further discussion. Thank you, Derek. All right, why don't we just... Want to try voting again? Yeah. Okay, so please pass your ballots if it works.
Thank you.
Technology. Oh, there we go. Ms. Evenson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried, eight a's, zero nays. Thank you and congratulations, Derek. We're on to the next item, which is comments from Jim Payne, mayor of the city of Superior, regarding the responsible bidder ordinance. The mayor, Mayor Payne, has a council meeting at 6:30, so he has to leave us in about 10 minutes. Normally, we would have probably had him speak during the public works portion of the responsible bidder ordinance, but he won't be available at that time. Mr. Austin had made this contact. I don't know if you have anything to say or any questions before you introduce him?
Sure. Mayor Payne has been involved with a responsible bidder ordinance or establishing one in Superior, Wisconsin, and has some valuable input on some potential lessons learned and good things that are happening with that RBO in place up there in Superior. So Mr. Mayor Payne, without further ado, go ahead.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council for the opportunity to speak. I was really pleased at the chance to speak about this ordinance, and I'll keep my remarks short. At our council meeting, we restrict speakers to three minutes if it's just public comment, and I enforce that with an iron fist, so I will hold myself to the same standard. I actually had the honor of offering and introducing two responsible bidders ordinances. I served on the Douglas County Board before I was the mayor of Superior, and I introduced it and helped to pass it there, and it was one of my first acts as mayor of Superior. The ordinance was in response to a lot of concern we felt in the city at the fall of some pretty significant labor protections that protected the whole community, things like prevailing wage and project labor agreement that helped make sure that we had high-quality labor working on public works projects, making sure that we got the best possible work for our money. So what we did with the ordinance, and yours is substantially similar, it just sets a base level of responsibility, make sure that we're dealing with the best possible actors, and preferably those local companies that have been providing good service to our communities for a very long time. So the way these ordinances are designed, most of your local companies, the people you're used to working with are easily going to meet these requirements. How we implemented it was to just ask them to sign an affidavit upfront. If you want to bid on one of our projects, we simply ask that you assert that you meet these fairly basic standards. If we didn't do that, and what we've seen even in Superior, I imagine you've seen it in your area of the council as well, is that if you don't hold some basic standards about who can perform work on public projects, anybody will flood in to do it. And it might seem counterintuitive that construction crews might come up from the southern United States to work in the frigid cold of Wisconsin, but it will happen. It does happen. You've probably already started to see unsavory contractors come into your community. We certainly have. So the responsible bidders ordinance simply levels the playing field and allows our high-quality local contractors to know that they can bid in a fair bidding environment, that they're going to be bidding with like companies that have high standards, and it makes sure that we get good projects because we want to make sure not just that we're having the most affordable contracts on behalf of our constituents, but that the work that we get out of it is as high quality as possible so we don't have to go back and repair a shoddy job or even redo the project altogether. That has generally been my experience, about two minutes and 55 seconds. So if I can answer any questions, I would be happy to.
Does the council have any questions for the mayor? Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're on to item number seven. Consider the appointment of two city representatives to convene the standing committee for the Superior Creek landfill expansion. Sue, do you have any comments you want to start with?
Not really. I, excuse me, provided a memo to explain. This is actually currently ongoing is the request for the expansion of the current landfill, and that's, and you have named, and we had one representative on that citing committee, and that's the mayor. But this is actually a committee that is for the older, the expansion from 2000, the mid-2000s. And after that, there was a lot of litigation regarding that expansion. But as part of that expansion, there was a standing committee that was created that contained members of the affected municipalities. And that standing committee, you know, once we went through all of the, setting up exactly what the agreement was regarding the expansion, the standing committee of that expansion never, never met, as far as we can tell. And I guess the reason they didn't meet is because there weren't really any issues with the landfill. The duty, the roles of the committee would be to monitor the landfill operator, make sure they're abiding by the agreement, receiving certain documents if requested. So, but this is something that the present expansion committee, which is considering the agreement for this next expansion, thought in looking at the older expansion agreement would be beneficial to reconvene that standing committee just so that that committee could be in existence in the event there's certain information that might be helpful that that committee could get, you know, pursuant to the agreement in terms of the document sharing from the landfill operator and so on. And then also, there was a funding mechanism for that standing committee to, in order to do their work, and the present, the present committee thought that it might be beneficial to, you know, that there might be some funds from the landfill operator in order for them to meet and to do the business that they probably should have been doing over the last 15 or 20 years. But as I said, it's good that it wasn't necessary for them to meet because I think things have been going well. But, so this is more of a formality, and it's not necessarily that this committee is going to keep meeting and really doing too much because that agreement has been, obviously, been done. It's more to monitor what's going on now with the present expansion and possibly use it as a vehicle to get information that might be helpful in considering the new expansion. So that committee has two city representatives on it because at that point, that expansion, just the way the rules were in terms of how many each municipality gets, that provided for two. The present expansion only provides for one. Those meetings, the present expansion, those meetings have been happening, I would say, about every month or so, and the mayor attends as the city rep, and then I also attend just for assistance. I was somewhat involved in the tail end of the original expansion beginning in 2002. So I volunteered to be the second member. As I said, I don't know whether this committee is going to be consistently meeting or not, but we just thought if, since the two of us attend the other meetings, and it's my understanding that the other municipalities are also kind of teaming up on, doubling up on their committee members because it's basically kind of doing the same type of work and probably would meet contemporaneously or, you know, consecutively in the mornings that they meet. So, but that's up to you to decide who the two are going to be, but that was just our suggestion.
Mr. Bemke.
I guess with that, I would make a motion to appoint the mayor and the city attorney to that landfill commission or committee.
So there's a motion and a second to appoint the mayor and the city attorney to that landfill committee. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Zachary.
Was the city attorney already kind of a part of that committee?
You mean way back in 2002?
No, if we, like, are you a part of it now, like, ultimately? Because you're answering any legal questions, like, would it benefit us to have another person outside of you representing, or no?
Well, I guess...
She's currently not a voting member?
Yeah, I'm not a voting member of the current committee now.
A voting member, but, okay.
Right. That's correct. I mean, I guess if I'm going to be there and if you feel that there's, you know, a third, since I'm there already, I can certainly understand that.
I don't know. I'm not saying... Just clarifying.
Wants to go. They're at 7:30 in the morning. They're a good time. No.
So my, so then do you feel like there's any kind of conflict or anything with what you see your role as in that, as the lawyer and as a representative?
No, I do not, but, no, I don't. Not at all.
And another township has a legal representation on their committee also. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Ryan? And Ms. Evenson.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried, eight a's, zero nays. We're on to item number eight. Consider for adoption a general ordinance amending portions of section 340.004 of the municipal code creating an always stop at 12th Street South and Chestnut Street. This item was recommended for approval at the January council meeting, but the ordinance had not been provided at the meeting, which is now attachment number two. What are your wishes? Mr. Catnaugh.
Thank you. I'm not going to rehash everything that I said last meeting about this. I'd hoped it would have made it back on the public works committee agenda to discuss some of the ideas that were thrown out there, but it didn't. I don't feel that this four-way stop is necessary. I'm in particular, I mean, in relation to the school. The pickup and drop off for that is on the back on 13th Street. Engineering found that the stop sign, four-way stop, wasn't necessary. And I think it sets a bad precedent to any time a neighborhood calls up, they want to throw up stop signs. We, as a council, kind of step forward and put those in place. But if it's the wishes of the councils to do so, you know, that's what it is. But I feel like we could have done other things, and I understand that it's went on for a while. But I'm going to be voting against this for the reasons I stated.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Zachary.
Just clarification. I don't think we, as a council, do that. We've had other stop signs come before us. We're very aware that people, you know, I could say I'd love a stop sign where my house is because I get cars in my yard a couple times a year. But we're not talking about that. We're talking about this specific area that has proven to be rather dangerous. So I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Any other discussion or...
I'd like, I'd like to comment, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I agree with Jake. I know I've expressed my concerns as well. We pay and hire experts in the field to make recommendations to us as a council, and that's what our engineering staff did. The study was done at time and money of taxpayers' money. The study came back with a recommendation of not changing it, but yet we, as a council, are saying we know more than the city engineer and are doing it anyway. I agree with Jake, the same thing. I mean, if we have five people call on one street, say that they need a stop sign, and then we decide to put a stop sign up, we're not going with, you know, what our expert, the engineer for the city is saying. So I'm not going to be voting in favor of it either. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dean.
Chief Levens, can you refresh my memory? I think that the, at the public works meeting, I was at that meeting, you were in support of this, if I recall. Did I just give you, go back on it? I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it.
Okay. I couldn't remember exactly where we were.
Yeah, I mean, I'm of the opinion that it won't hurt, you know, no offense to the city engineer, but I don't feel it will hurt, so I'm not opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I fully understand the viewpoint of having this intersection under the analyzation of a study and the results of the study, but I think there's also value to the community's viewpoint, and there's value to elected officials that understand that there's more to the story than meets the eye with this particular intersection. I think our concerns with the school and the pedestrians' traffic and the number of failure to yield accidents is no mistake. I think there's obviously a problem at this intersection, so I'm in support of this.
Thank you. What are your wishes?
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Do you have a motion by Dean, seconded by Ryan? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Ms. Evenson.
No.
Thank you. That motion carried five a's, three nays. Okay, so we're on to item number nine. Consider for adoption the action of the plan commission at its meeting held on February 7th. The plan commission met at February, on February 7th at 4:00 PM. List of attendees are in file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:03. The previous minutes were approved. Six a's, zero nays. There are Vandewall Associates and Wisconsin Rapids Rediscovery Plan update, which was provided by Kyle Kearns. Item three was the plan 220044, Wisconsin Rapids East LLC for completing a certified survey map to combine and create four lots off of Poplar Street. That motion carried six a's, zero nays. Plan 22-0060 is RC Rapids East LLC, request for a certified survey map. Approval to combine and create two lots on Spring Street. That motion was also approved, six a's, zero nays. Item five was plan 22-0039, Marshfield Clinic Health Service or System. A site plan review and architectural review to construct a healthcare center and other site improvements at 2020, 24th Street South. There was discussion, and ultimately, there was a motion and seconded to approve, six a's, zero nays. Item six was to adjourn. That motion carried, six a's, zero nays. The meeting was adjourned at 4:28 PM. Does anybody have any questions? Kyle is online. Should you have any questions? Otherwise, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan commission minutes.
So a motion by Jay. Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. And Ms. Evenson.
Aye.
Thank you. And that motion carried six a's, one nay, one abstention. We're on to item 10. Consider for adoption the actions of the standing committee of the common council. The first one is Finance Property Committee held on February 1st. Tom?
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Property Committee met at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, in the council chambers at City Hall. First, all members of the Finance Property Committee were present, also in attendance, all the person Delaney, all the person Zachary, Mayor Blazer, Sue Schell, Ryan Hartman, Paul Volart, and Tim DeSorci. A list of others in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. Item one, call the meeting to order. Chairperson Reom called the meeting to order at 4:30, 4:00 PM. Item two, review and approve the equipment replacement plan for 2022 and a portion of 2023. It is moved by Bemke, seconded by Reom, to approve the 2022 equipment replacement plan and a portion of the 2023 replacement plan as presented, which is attachment one, and the motion carried. Review, item three, review and assess rates for contractors and non-resident compost site passes for 2022. It was moved by Catnaugh to approve the non-resident annual compost pass rate of $55, non-resident contractor annual rate of $400, and $25 for each additional tag, and City of Wisconsin Rapids business annual rate of $50, and $50 for each additional tag. That motion died for lack of a second. It was then moved by Bemke, seconded by Reom, to approve the non-resident annual compost pass rate of $55, annual contractor compost rate, pass rate of $300 for City of Wisconsin Rapids businesses, and $400 for non-resident contractors, and $25 for each additional tag. That motion carried with Catnaugh voting in the negative. Item four, consider a request from the Police and Fire Commission to allocate funding and approval of a budget transfer resolution for the recruitment of a fire chief. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Reom, to approve a $7,500 proposal from McGrath Consulting Group Incorporated for assistance in the recruitment of a new fire chief and budget resolution number two. That motion carried, and that's attachment number two. Item number five, review the 2023 budget timeline and procedure. The committee discussed the budget, 2023 budget timeline. No action was taken. Attachment, that's attachment number three. Item six, discuss possible American Rescue Plan Act grant projects. The committee discussed the final guidance issued by the U.S. Treasury regarding the eligible uses of the American Rescue Plan Act grant. Ideas for the use of the grant funds will be solicited from all the persons and staff, and a procedure for prioritizing the proposed projects will be determined at a future meeting, and no action was taken. Item seven was audited. Bills is moved by Reom, seconded by Catnaugh, to It is moved by Rehm, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve check numbers 11314 to check number 11595. That motion carried. Item eight was to set next meeting date. The next regular meeting day of the committee will be Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, at 4:30 PM. Item number nine was to adjourn, and there's a motion by Bampke, seconded by Rehm, to adjourn. That motion carried, and the meeting adjourned at 6:11 PM. And with that, Your Honor, move for adoption of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Rehm. So we have a motion. And a second by Jay. Is there any, go ahead, Jay.
Thank you. So I wanted to speak on the item regarding the compost site. And again, I'm not going to go over everything that was discussed at the Finance Committee meeting. But I just wanted to reiterate that this being a city asset and how valuable it is to the entire Wisconsin Rapids greater area, we need to start utilizing this more as a way to generate what it's actually worth. Uh, we had a gentleman in the audience who was able to come up and speak to exactly what that's worth to his business. And we had time there to talk about ways to potentially generate more revenue and also make this more beneficial for our taxpayers instead of somewhat subsidizing neighboring areas that use the compost. That's where my motion came from. As noted, it didn't have support, so it failed. This is an area, in terms of generating revenue, that I think we can continue to do across the city and all our assets and bring in more revenue so that we don't have to talk about falling short in the budget as much. We don't have to cut as much. And I bring this up across the board, whether it's Aquatic Center, compost site, EMS contracts, wastewater contracts. There's areas within the city that generate revenue that we need to start capitalizing on more. And as I'll be vacating the seat in a couple of months, I just hope that that's something that continues to stay on council members' minds and that we can continue to work towards, because the more we bring in, the less we have to cut. And these are things that I don't feel we're getting our full value on.
Thank you. Uh, Dean?
Um, I, I don't want to hold out an item, but I just have a question on, um, item six. And the committee discussed the final guidance issued by the U.S. Treasury. What is the date that those funds have to be used by?
Tim's online. He can help answer that. But I believe it's end of 20, they have to be committed by the end of 2024, if that's correct, Tim?
They have to be committed by December 31st, 2024, and spent by December 31st, 2026.
That's all. So the commission, the commitment of projects or ideas has to be by end of '24.
Correct.
That's all I needed. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
I would like to expand on, um, what Jake was talking about. I believe it's time, you know, the city kind of moved forward. We have assets here that we can make some revenue on. And I totally agree with Jake, whether it be the compost, the Aquatic Center. There are, you know, we're limited on what we can generate revenue when we have these here. I hope that we can continue or to begin to make a little bit more revenue on this. So it, um, it does help our budget in the end, um, identical to what Jake said. So I just hope that everybody's thinking of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jake?
I just wanted to add one more thing to that as well. We're discussing and talking about doing this already in the area of the transportation utility. And I think that's a, a step in the right direction, and, and we've taken appropriate amount of time to figure out how to do that right. Uh, and the reason we're doing that is because we do face this issue of revenue versus expenditures and the budget discussion that we have every year. And I think that these other areas hopefully should and will get the same attention that the transportation utility has, and we can work towards that. So, you know, in however many years it is, we, we'd have more of a, a surplus on the budget through cuts and through revenue, and, and hopefully, we don't have to cut as much. And, and that's the idea there. So I think we're in the right direction with working transportation utility first. That's a big one. Um, and hopefully, these other ones can start to get more attention, too.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just have one more, Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
So the American Rescue Plan, I know, um, I read the document that was provided in the packet, and it has all the guidelines and the deadlines and that. And I know, is it something that, um, I know it says to, um, ideas solicited from the committee members? When is that, what is a process? Have you, has the committee or Tim set a process up, a precedent of utilizing these funds? Um, just looking for a, a timeline, I guess. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So Tim and I have been speaking, and we're waiting until after tonight to find out, you know, whether or not this would be approved or, so I'm gonna, we're gonna generate an email, and that email will go out to department heads and council members to solicit ideas. And then it'll be brought back to Finance for, for a further discussion on prioritization of those ideas or elimination of, of certain ideas.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing nothing further, please cast your ballots. Uh, Ms. Evanson?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Uh, we're on to item B, Public Works Committee meeting held February 3rd. Uh, Ms. Austin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, in the council chambers at City Hall and via remote video conference. Ryan Austin, Matt Zachar, and Patrick Delaney were in attendance. Others attending are listed below. Uh, the meeting was called to order at 5:00 o'clock. Item number two, review the proposed mailbox replacement policy. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Austin, to approve the mailbox replacement policy described as option one. Motion carried 3-0. Item three, review the snow removal policy. Motion by Delaney and seconded by Zachar to hold over until next month. The motion carried 3-0. Item number four, review January Engineering and Street Department Activities Report. The reports were reviewed. Item number five, review the ITS grant proposals. Motion by Zachar, seconded by Delaney, to approve MSA's proposal in the amount of $71,355. Motion carried 3-0. Item number six, review parking ordinance along Lincoln Street, 27.131C19 revisions. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Austin, to remove the parking restriction. Motion carried 3-0. Item seven, review this, review and set the preliminary target revenue amount for the transportation utility. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Austin, to set the target revenue amount at 500,000, 350,000 for the special assessments, and 150,000 for resurfacing, a total of 500,000. Motion carried 2 to 1 with Zachar voting in the negative. Item number eight, review the responsible bidder ordinance or model ordinance. Uh, motion by Austin, seconded by Zachar, to approve codifying the responsible bidder ordinance as presented, along with the, the addition of the following items. Item one, sworn statement of proper employee classification. Item two, proper workers' compensation insurance coverage for all employees. And item three, proof of professional trade license required by local law. Motion carried 2-1 with Delaney voting in the negative. Item nine, review the referral list. Uh, we removed item number three, and item 10 was adjournment. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Is there a second? Thank you. We have a second by Mr. Veneman. Go ahead, Patrick.
When you read the, uh, item number two, review the proposed mailbox replacement policy, did it go with option one, striking copies of the receipts are required for both materials and labor?
I believe that's correct, yes, without looking back at our agenda items.
So I would just like option one with it, uh, taking out of their language.
Can we hold, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Can we hold out, uh, item seven?
Does anybody have a problem with item seven being held out? Okay. So we'll hold out item seven. Now we're just confirming that. Can you give us the language again, Patrick? Option one.
Yeah, it's option one. It's on the, uh, I would say, second paragraph. It's the last sentence. It says, "Copies of the receipts are required for both materials and labor." Correct. Yes. It was just gonna be a straight honor dollar replacement because we had...
Correct, yes. Yep.
Thank you for catching that. I recall that. Uh, it's item seven.
Yep. So, Mr. Austin, are you good with the motion being to amend or correct the minutes?
Yes.
And approve the balance of the report?
Yes.
And Dean, you're good with that?
I'm fine with the second.
Okay. Go ahead, Matt.
So when we vote on this to, to approve the balance, then the number eight, review the responsible bidder model ordinance, is passed? As stands?
Correct.
Okay.
With item seven being held out, we'll take care...
Seven's held out.
Seven's held out.
Yep.
Correct. Everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. And Ms. Evanson?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. And Mr. Zachar?
At this point in time, I, I just didn't want to pass. I don't, I don't want to pass the transportation utility. So I felt I needed to hold it out in order to, uh, not support it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion on item then?
So clarification, the, this isn't motion to passing the, this is a setting the target revenue, correct?
Correct.
It's setting the target revenue of max at 500,000.
Yeah, and so then, you know, the ordinance still needs to be brought back. And so, yeah, it hasn't, it's not approving the ordinance, it's approving the, so, yeah, the target balance of what that would be. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, so we're moving this forward to come up with a target balance without ever passing the ordinance. So as of right now, we haven't passed the ordinance.
Correct. It's just what the funding limit's gonna be.
Okay.
So we're basically not going to 2.0, or we're going for what we targeted as special assessments and a cushion?
Correct. And the, and the balance of that cushion would be used, uh, whether it's above 350 or below 350, would be used for bill and overlay. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rehm.
Thank you, Your Honor. Where I support the utility, um, in a, I disagree with the, what we're looking at to set the target amount at. I would wish we'd look at a higher amount. And so, um, I'm gonna vote against it. And I'm assuming it's gonna pass, but, uh, uh, I'm, uh, in favor of proceeding with the utility, but I, uh, I, I wish we would look at a higher amount. I know when this came to the committee, I think the amount was, uh, 2 million, with it broke down in 350, I think it was, uh, for the, um, assessment. Out of that. And now, you know, maybe that's too much to start with, because that's what I was hearing that night. And I guess out of it, after that discussion, to me, the, getting down to that 500,000 was too low of a point to start at. So is there somewhere in between? And that's why to start at the, if, look at a target point of that, to me, is too low. So that's, I guess, if I explained it right, that you understand, is that I support it, but I wish we'd look at a higher amount, uh, to start at. I, I think we could, because I think we're, I understand the, the reasonings that were said to start lower. I understand that, that. But I just think that we could start a little higher, maybe not at that 2 million level to start with. I would be willing to go close to that, but I think we could start higher than that 500,000. You know, so that's my, I wanna go on record just to say that I support it, but I don't support being as low as that, the target amount that we're being looked at. So if that's where we end up, that's where we end up to start with. I wish we'd look at higher.
Thank you. Jake?
So I can't say I'm all the way there on the transportation utility yet, but I am happy with it, having been in discussion for a long time, to see that the revenue goal was set at 500K and not higher, because I did have a problem with it being higher. Especially when it was discussed as uncapped. This conversation originally began as a replacement for special assessments, and somehow throughout it, we got up to talking about millions of dollars in this fund, depending on which option you discussed. I, I think this was to replace special assessments, that's what it should be, putting any more of a burden on our businesses and residents. And, and this additional tax would just be too much. So I'm gonna vote in favor of this because I agree with the limit for the ordinance of 500K or the revenue target. But I can't say I'm all the way there yet on the transportation utility.
Thank you, Jake. Dean?
In reference, especially what Jake mentioned, Mr. Catnaugh just mentioned, yeah, this did begin, begin as a alternative to special assessments. I've been passionate about alternative special assessments since I've, um, been elected, and I continue to, to, um, agree, and I'm happy that I agree. I think this cap of 500 is good. This eliminates the special assessment. And, um, moving, how this thing grew, it seemed like it did grow to fixing roads. And, um, we talked about it as eternal, as an alternative to borrowing for our roads. But, um, I think what we really need to do in that, as we need to, as we talked in several previous meetings, about working on the existing budget and borrowing for our roads, when we do know there's, I wouldn't call the word fat, but there might be excesses in the budget that we can work with. So I am, I am voting in the positive on this motion, and I am in favor of capping it at 500 and looking for our alternative to borrowing against, um, our budget in other methods. So taking it from existing budget and try to, but our borrowing issue is the next priority after the special assessments for me, so I'll be continuing to harp on that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jay.
I guess I'd just echo what Dean just said as well. I, I, I think, in all fairness, if we're gonna do this, we need to pick a spot right now and get started on this. I, I think this is...
I, I think this is something that's gonna be reviewed more than likely every year going forward, so I, I just think we need to get going. Thank you.
Uh, Tom. Mr. Rehm?
Yeah, um, it's, just, I wanna make a comment, I guess, about the getting away from the borrowing. Um, that's a big amount of money. And um, I, I, you know, maybe there is that hiding there that I don't know of. Maybe somebody can find it. But, um, that type of money for road construction, if that could be found somewhere else in the budget to use, I'll go on record and say I think we're fooling ourselves. Maybe, maybe somebody can, or some people can prove me wrong. But if we, if the intent is to get away from borrowing, that's where this came from. To get away from special assessments, I think you could've just somehow three hundred fifty thousand or three hundred seventy-five thousand, that would've done it for you. So I think, uh, the road construction, the overlay and that is all part, is all part of this. And yeah, it's part of the, a budget process, but it's all part of the process that has to be considered now. At least, at least impartial now. Not to and and I understand, Matt, where you're coming from. Uh, on this one, I guess we're on opposite sides, and I understand that. But at least we're saying that. And so, but I how we can get there to, to that end to cover the borrowing one way or the other, if it's for the utility fund, or if people can find it in this bu, in the budget, that's almost gonna take magician, I think. This was to when it was brought forward was to give another input and route to go. It was to see the, how much the costs were, would be residents, businesses, and that. And before we even get there, we still ha, uh, we gotta, you know, have to get there, but we still have to have hearings on this even yet, too. So, um, even if we go with this five hundred thousand or thereabouts, that's all gonna have, the, the amount is all gonna have to be there for the people to see. And the explanation's gonna have to be there, what they're all gonna benefit by that. So say it's five hundred thousand, what are you gonna get? Three fifty's assuming what the assessments are. What's four and fifty gonna buy them? That's why I say I think we're starting too low. The intent of this program was to get away from the borrowing. Obviously, people said it was, you know, it was a another tax or whatever you wanna say about it. Yeah, but it is to generate money. But if the intent is I, i, if you wanna look at the utility fund, that's fine, but if the intent really is the special assessments, 'cause that's where this started a long time ago, then within the last couple of years or so, the utility fund came into play. And that was looked at as an addition, what could be done with the assessments. So I just think, um, without, uh, dragging it on, when we say or think about or talk about that there's this money that the budget is that fat, I don't know it's that fat. What scares me, I guess anybody could come up and say, I wanna just cut a million dollars from something, or five hundred thousand here and two fifty there, two fifty there. What scares me is what you just cut out by that. It's easy just to say dollar thought numbers, but what'd you just cut out by it? You can't just say, cut five hundred thousand to departments, say, well, now you cut the five hundred thousand. They budgeted for that five hundred thousand 'cause they thought they needed it. Now you're telling them they don't need it. Well, you tell them. What five hundred thousand do you want them to cut? I wanted to do something over the years with this, with the assessments. People will hit hard with that. It was a shocker, thicker shock when people saw it. I don't know if people didn't believe it till they actually got it and were hit by it. A small number of people each year. You know, probably didn't hit the news enough as it should have. When you get stuck with a ten thousand dollar bill, and you got three kids at home and a wife, and yes, in some cases, maybe just one income. So it isn't always the little old eighty-year-old grandma just on social security. There's others that are struggling along, struggling along that are thirty-five years old that, uh, in that same boat. So I just think it's, uh, maybe this is how we're gonna start out. But to get to the end, if there is an end that we wanna get to, that's there's a lot more thought, I think, that we have to put into this. And I think that fund is a route to go towards. I think we have to look at what the figures are. We have to put them out there and say, this is what I'm gonna have to pay on my house at twelve twenty, twenty-second Street North? That's mine. And somebody can say, this is what they're gonna pay at theirs, and how's that compared to me, 'cause I'm voting for it? In comparison to them that they have to pay that to. And I'm willing to do that. That's why I ran for this job. The intent was to make the situation better. I don't think we are. I don't think the intent, at least for me, was not to make money off of this, to use it for other means. I think some people got, or misconstrued, uh, of what, uh, that this money would be taken for something else. If that was to be done, there sure would have to be a lot of discussion to take place. There are things that need to be looked at in the future to be done. That's obvious. Anything that was built fifty years ago is gonna have to be either remodeled or re, re, uh, rebuilt, a new one. So when somebody says, talks about something have, have to be replaced or something, that's true. So then how are you gonna do that? But that doesn't mean necessarily that has to come out of this fund, but I think that's what some people started to jump at. Now, if that's what somebody, if they wanna do that, I guess that's what they could do, but obviously, the city building is one, for instance, that, uh, is gonna need replacing. Just massive upbringing to bring it up to code. So to cut this off is, uh, it's, uh, as I started with, I'm gonna vote against this. I support the utility. I think it's something that get everybody into pay for it, and that's what the thing was with the assessments. So, um, hopefully, that's the route we go. I'm gonna vote against, against it again, but, uh, it's, uh, hopefully, that those who support it over time can see how increase, to increase that fund. But I, there, we have a lot of steps to go through yet till we get there. We gotta get the people to buy into it. Until we put it out there, we don't know that they're gonna buy into it yet. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Rehm. Um, Mr. Zachar?
Thank you. Um, so as far as I can see, over the last year, like, what I'm learning is, it, it's not that it's out there, but the budget is something that is held sacred. It's protected, and I'm seeing that, uh, already, just in trying to loosen it up a little bit so that we all can be apart, 'cause it really starts with the council, and then the council agrees to make the committees. It's not that the committees hold the power over the council. It's that we're agreeing to have other people speak for us. And right now, what I'm seeing is this, uh, protection or this, uh, you know, a little bit of a fight over, over who, who gets final say over what happens with the budget. But in reality, like I said at the, at the committee meeting, the budget is really all that matters to the people who live in this city. And what I see happening right now is, we've already said that we can't run our budget off of all the taxes, and we pay a lot of taxes. We pay high taxes in our community. And, and I think for the most part, people would say they're okay with it, even though they don't love doing it, they're okay with it, because they think they like being here. But if now we're gonna say the taxes aren't enough, so we have to charge special assessments, because we funded everything else, but we forgot to fund the roads, so now we gotta raise two million dollars. You know, everybody else gets their money. Everybody else is good, whether it's high or low or a need or a want, because we really don't know if it's a need or a want. We're saying it's what they need. What we're saying is, let's, you know, let, let's not get everybody scared and say we gotta cut all these services, and we gotta fire all these people. Like, these are just more like protection mechanisms to scare people off from actually having the tough conversation. So we're saying, find five percent in everything across the board and figure out if we can do that. If we can't quite get to it, then you have to bring it to us and say, okay, these are the tough decisions we're gonna have to make. We may not get reelected, we, you know, but those are the things we have to do. Like, this has been going on for, as far as I understand, for like thirty years. So I think you've been on the board for quite some time. So you were there at the beginning of the special assessments. And what I'm seeing right now is the special assessments, they were they were put into place to fund part of the roads that should've already been, been being paid through the taxes that we were paying. So now we're saying they're, they're higher and they're higher. And at first, I was all like, this is gonna be great. Let's get this transportation utility set up. And then, you're right, it went from five hundred thousand to a million, to two million, to two and a half million dollars, before we ever passed the ordinance. We were at two and a half million dollars. And these are all the things that the people who live in the, who actually live in the city, who actually live in the city, have to pay. And I'm pretty sure that we're gonna get this transportation utility set up, and we're gonna find ways, whether it's us, or it's the next people, or the next mayor, we're gonna say, you know what, we, we have all this money. We can start, we can start taking out debt again, because, you know, those guys were smart and paid it all off, but it's out there. Doesn't matter about the ordinance, you know, that we got a new transportation utility, and that can just keep going up and up and up. And who's paying that? The people who live here. And on top of that, we're gonna start taking out that. I know we are. Like, right now, we say, we're gonna, you know, stop taking out debt and do this transportation utility, but I know in the future, maybe we'll all be, you know, gone at that point in time. They're gonna keep going. Like, we're setting up the community almost for failure, because we're going to give it another mechanism to be able to go after the people who live here and get more and more money. Eventually, people aren't gonna live here anymore. They're just gonna say enough's enough, and they're gonna go. So, so what I'm saying is, the money's in the budget. We just haven't looked closely enough yet. We haven't made the tough decisions. We haven't said we have to shrink if we have to shrink, because that's what, I know, I know America lives in this little if I offend anybody, I apologize, but we kinda live in a fairy, fairy tale land where we can just take out more and more debt, and nobody seems to care. I, and I think this is our government. We can't control the state so much. We can't control the Fed so much, but we can try to help here and help the people that live here keep this in control. And I don't wanna set up this utility so that it can be abused in the future. And I know we all feel good about we're not gonna do that, but it's not really about us. It's about future generations. And in the end, it's about the people who live here, not the people who work here and don't live here. It's about the people who live here and are paying it. And again, we're not even talking about finding the money in the budget, because, you know, we're, we're fighting really hard just to be able to kinda get to see the budget and see it from the front end. I don't wanna bring in a magician. I, I think we can do the work ourselves, and I think that's where I wanna go, and that's why I'm not gonna support the utility, period, no matter what we started out at. And I say, we work hard to find the money in the budget, and the community's gotta work with us, because we shouldn't be running our government this way. We all know it. We just don't wanna make the tough decisions to make it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Veneman?
Um, thank you. Um, yeah, one of the, we really haven't talked about the utility and the impact on businesses tonight. And, um, that's kinda where I changed my tune. I was somewhat in favor of a larger number than the five hundred thousand until, well, after quite some time. It took an awful long time to get that um, study we paid for to get that last fifteen percent, I believe it was, of, of the report, which showed the impact on businesses being pretty significant, especially, we talked about the fast food, and we talked Especially, we talked about the fast food, and we talked about, but we're talking like five times what they're paying now. So the, if especially in, so if you're taking five times of the amount towards the business, basically what it amounts to, I'm not positive on the exact numbers, but it's been a while since we started this thing, but right now, roads paid for about about six between sixty and seventy percent by residents and about thirty percent by business. And if this transportation utility would almost reverse those numbers, give or take. So the impact of businesses on this, if we went that two point five million that Mr. Zachary just talked about, it'd be huge. And now that we got these numbers back, and we did, we canceled a meeting, or we we finished a meeting that people came to learn about this transportation utility, place was packed, and we didn't have the numbers. And people left thinking, well, we don't even know what the thing's gonna cost yet. So we finally get this, we finally get the the study back. And I've switched my gears a little bit in terms of, yes, I'm still in favor of the utility. I still owe it to my constituents to work on removing special assessments, and at this point, that's the only way I see to do it. And half a million dollars is a lot less than two point five. And but and the impact on businesses is less significant on a half a million dollars. So yes, I'm in favor of this, but I think that we're talking about how the public's gonna take it. We also have to keep consideration how the businesses are gonna take it, and what and along those same lines, with the one thing about this is that some of this is, it's based on trips, and a lot of those trips to businesses are people from out of town. So that don't aren't Wisconsin Rapids residents. So that's one way. We, if we go back, we talked about raising a nickel out of McDonald's hamburger is what's gonna cover this. But it's also, it's another way to get what Mr. Cat and I was talking about before, getting revenue from other sources than Wisconsin Rapids residents. And so if there's any way to spread this out to a fair amount between businesses and people that don't have a sidewalk in front of their yard, in front of their house, so everybody's doing this special assessment part equally, I'm in favor of it, but we have to understand that it's also, it is a way to get some revenue from people that don't live in Wisconsin Rapids to replace that, I would hope, if we did it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake?
Mr. Mayor?
I'll put you after Jake here next, Sherry.
I might have to leave then. If I'll hold.
Go ahead. Jake Jake's yielding, so you can go next.
Oh, thank you. One thing before I go, I just wanna say, I know Mr. Venemen was just talking, he said multiple times about we finally got the re finally got the study back, but, I mean, the business amount we had, as well as the residential amount, we had all this data from sellers last year. It talked about the size of the building. We had fast food restaurants. Those amount, and when the last council meeting, when I asked, Mr. Ike said those amounts are fairly similar, and he said they were actually less now. All this data we've had for almost a year. And it, we still have nothing. And yes, it's a cost to businesses, but it's fair. You have to remember as well, a lot of these businesses have a lot of road footage, I mean, on on A Street, so if special assessments occur, those businesses pay that also. So you have to remember that also. People keep saying the businesses are gonna suffer, the businesses are gonna suffer. Yes, it's a higher cost. However, if they get a special assessment assessment, it's gonna be a lot more than your you and I as residents. So we need to remember that as well. And my other question is, you know, we keep talking, some of the committee members keep saying, okay, we can find it in budget. Yes, we need to look at the budget. Be a little bit more stringent. But when some of us are talking about in different committees, you know, oh, do we do we need this? We need that? Yep, yep, yep. You know, they wanna roll all out. Yet, other times, they're saying we need to find it in the budget. It's like, we need to prioritize as a council and on committee. You know, if you're saying that we need to find it in the budget, then when you're on your committee, you should be looking at ways to reduce it as it is right now today. My final thought before I go, and I don't know if Tim is on the phone. So we had originally, like I had mentioned last month, that we had hoped that this was all supposed to be in place already by this year. So the money that was used for the transportation utility, if it had been in effect by now, the monthly for two thousand twenty-two would pay for the special assessments in two thousand twenty-three. As some of you had talked about already with the transportation utility, it is already February. The ordinance is in draft form. I imagine that's gonna come back at least probably two or three times. There has to be two hearings on that. And we still haven't even decided if it's going through. So if this would get passed this year in two thousand twenty-two, now there's not gonna be any money for special assessments in two thousand twenty-three because we're a year late. So usually, the special assessment hearings are done in April, and I know Tim had said that we could push them off, or we have to make an ordinance saying that we're pushing them off. But like I said, I'm I'm hopeful that we make some progress this year, but I don't know if we're gonna have the time. So how are we going to do the people that had the assessments done last year? We've directed the engineering department to focus on that. Where's the money coming from for the special assessment that done last year, and then the ones that'll be done this year? That won't be any money until next year? If that makes any sense, Tim, if you could help.
Sure. I mean, the way special assessments from an accounting standpoint is we recognize revenue when it's collected. So the special assessments that we billed last year and the prior years, as we collect it, we recognize that revenue, and obviously, you know, for the budget, I estimate that. So what was put on the twenty twenty-one tax roll, collected in twenty twenty-two, is we'll recognize that revenue for this year's budget. Obviously, next year, if, you know, if the special assessment ordinance is in place, you know, those installment payments, we would put on the twenty twenty-two tax roll collected in twenty twenty-three, and that would be estimated in the budget. Now, as far as the special assessments that are gonna be or are pending this year for last year's work, you know, we still have to have those those hearings, wherein until we have that hearing, then the, you know, if they're approved, then the invoice is generated, we send those out, and then they're put on a payment plan, and then, you know, X percentage will pay it upfront. Some of this will go on the installment plan. And if those are billed out, obviously, then that would be incorporated in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so the work that was done in two thousand twenty-one, people will be billed for it in this this year. And so it could be, I know a lot of the people over by Seventeenth Avenue and that big chunk over by Chase. So and realistically, because we won't have the transportation utility, money until actually collected in two thousand twenty-three worked. So they actually could be paying on this for two years before the utility actually starts to compensate for that, right?
Yeah, correct. I mean, assuming that we have those those hearings this year and they're billed, you know, obviously, they'll be put on the installment plan or pay it upfront. You know, and that's another issue that with, you know, if the ordinance proceeds forward, we have to look at kind of, you know, looking at, you know, I know in the ordinance, in its draft form that was initially presented to the Public Works Committee, you know, had a credit in there, and internally, we're kinda working through that to come up with some different options that if the ordinance were to proceed, you know, how we would kinda treat those for people that prepaid their assessments and people that are in installment plan.
Okay, thank you. I just I just wanted everybody to know, because I know a lot of people, we're all getting calls from the people that had the special assessments done. And we kept saying, yep, we're gonna do the transportation utility. They're hoping that they don't have to pay. I mean, some of them are ten, twenty thousand dollars. Well, you still put that on a payment plan of ten years. That's a big chunk of change. So we're already, oh, almost gonna be probably two years, but they're still gonna be paying this. So I hope we all realize that as a council, that, you know, these people are still gonna be paying this. So that's all I needed. And with that, I'm going out. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Uh, Jake?
Thanks. So a while ago, when I hit the button, I was originally gonna speak to what Jay had said. There's been a lot of great conversations since then. I'm gonna start with what I was gonna say after Jay spoke, which was that this most likely, if it passes, will be something that's reviewed every year. And that could be a good or a bad thing. One of my main concerns with the transportation utility is that when in place, it's in place, as Matt then spoke about, who's in these seats in the future could choose to raise that, which would be an additional tax being raised on residents when it gets to that time. And I feel like it's gonna be easy to make that argument when we get to that time and we need the money if we haven't figured out the budget yet. And that brings me to my next point, that borrowing for roads or bonding for anything is about to get a lot more expensive. I'm sure we've all heard that the Fed's going to be raising interest rates, which for us means that we're not gonna get as good a rates on our bonds. It's gonna get more expensive, so we need to figure out a way, as has been discussed, to hopefully not have to borrow for that and take it from the budget in in different ways, and that's a ongoing process that we're working on. But that that should be known is that going forward, that's gonna be a a different amount of borrowing than we've been doing the past ten years or however long rates have been favorable. The last thing I wanted to touch on is something that I've brought up previously when this has been in conversation, is the public education portion of this. I brought up before how I think this should almost be more of a referendum. That wasn't received well. But I do feel like at some point, we do need to get more public education. I know when I go to the city website, it's right on there. You can click on it. It's great. Not all our residents are city website visitors. I still would like to see something directly in every mailbox. I think that there's a paper that goes out, whether you order or not, that's in there. That might be something, but the public education has to happen on that more. But all these things are things to consider going forward. I just wanted to to note those again. And transportation utility, whatever the amount, once it's in place, it's in place, and I, before I end here, just to clarify, to change an ordinance, it does need a major, quite a majority of council approval, right? So if this went in place and the ordinance is five hundred thousand, enlighten me on the process that it would take to change that amount.
You're talking about when the actual ordinance comes before?
If it if it passes potentially, and the council four years from now is looking at it and says, we wanna make this two million.
Right. I I believe the ordinance, as it was proposed, does provide that each year, you determine what that amount is that's gonna be funded by the transportation utility.
Okay.
There's a table at the end of the ordinance that simply would need to be changed to list what what you want to fund. So that is anticipated or contemplated that that would be something that would be done each each year.
So with that, I would almost encourage that as a council, we figure out the budget, and if we're gonna be able to fund it through there before moving forward with a tool that could be used every year as an additional tax to whatever amount those who are on the council at that time decide. A lot there, a lot of ongoing conversation, just bringing back some points that I've spoken about before and bringing up some new ones, such as borrowing's about to get a lot more expensive.
Thank you. Jay?
Thank you. I just have a quick question for Joe, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, and I don't expect an answer tonight, but going forward for this discussion, assuming that this half a million dollar sticks, the balance from the special assessments, do you have Millenfield projects lined up, and do you have an estimate of how far you could go with that money?
The the Millenfield projects are not identified years out as far as a capital improvement type plan, but for a hundred and fifty thousand, we can go about three quarters of a mile. And and so if we're already budgeting a hundred thousand, we've also got the degradation monies that are collected for utility companies and excavators that tear into the street. That in twenty twenty-one, we collected just over a hundred thousand there as well, so that that could be used for street resurfacing. So in in theory, you know, if those funds are are all utilized, you know, we could, we could perhaps get two two miles out of street resurfacing with those funds.
Thank you. Patrick?
My question is for Sue. We have the draft ordinance that you referred back to. Is there any way to make that so it would specifically state that it is just for special assessments plus the addition for road resurfacing?
Yes, I believe as it was originally drafted, it it, the beginning of the ordinance, and I don't have it right in front of me, I could probably pull it up. But it was, it was pretty broad in terms of, it was basically saying, this ordinance can be used for all of these things, which, you know, soup, you know, A to Z. So and then in the table was where then the council each year would determine, okay, well, we're just, it's gonna be special assessments and and this. So it it would be possible, yes, to have that ordinance be more limited, more limited in saying this transportation utility ordinance is only going to be used for these types of projects or these classes of projects. I guess, you know, I obviously, the the more broader gives, the more broad ordinance gives more flexibility in that if a council wanted to, you know, expand, it would obviously be able, easier to do it through expanding the table that you're gonna do each year versus changing the ordinance. So I guess, but definitely, it could be more limiting at the beginning, and then it would, it would be more difficult than for a future council to expand it if the language was more limiting in the beginning, yes.
Okay, so we could say, like currently, the special assessments is, I believe, twenty-five percent of the cost of deconstruction. We could put that language in there so that it only applies to that. And then if they did wanna change it in the future, is it just a majority vote, or is it a?
Right, it's 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 a general ordinance. It's not a charter or anything like that, so it would just be a simple majority. And I'm assuming, you know, it's a, it's not a traffic or parking ordinance, so it would require two readings. But it would still be a simple majority.
Is there any way to make it the charter ordinance? Like, is that a big deal?
Well, I there there probably is a way, you know, it's, it might be possible to have an ordinance not be a charter ordinance and still require you know, a higher vote than majority vote, a super majority or two thirds, three quarters. Actually, two thirds and three quarters is the same for for a group of eight. That that's certainly possible. To basically say this is an ordinance that, if you wanna change, requires a two thirds majority.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
I just wanna comment on Mr. Delaney's question and others that have been brought up tonight. I don't think it's this council's place to try to restrict what future councils are going to do. I really don't. I think that's a slippery slope, that the residents of Wisconsin Rapids elect us as 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 all their persons to make the decisions for them, to have their voice. And if we try to take that voice away from future councils, I think that's counteractive. So that's my thought.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was gonna bring up that very thing, because there could be in the future, the citizens of Rapids wish to do something, and they elect people to do that. And I agree that I I think it's our responsibility to manage to manage what we need to manage during our terms. And then once we hand it off, you know, it's to that person's will and pleasure to do, do what they want regarding the ordinances or the governance of the city. Um I guess just to further let you know that if this passes tonight, I've been working with Joe, um tomorrow, we, we do a, a public, a press release, um basically encouraging citizens to contact City Hall um to kind of, you know, and I'll tell you right now that for, for a residential customer, it'll be roughly $20 a year, uh under, under the half million. The, the concern and the questions come in is what's it going to do for the small businesses? And so we want to give them an outlet to be able to contact us. And we also have an FAQ that's going to go out and um we're going to try to get out there, encourage people to educate themselves about it and to find out what it's going to cost their business. Um and so that will go out tomorrow should that pass tonight, which we've been working on. I'll go ahead, Patrick.
I don't mind uh restricting future councils. If you look at the city of Wisconsin Rapids, I mean, we're $60 million in debt. And if you look at government in the past, I mean, even look at the constitution, constitution was written to restrict government, the future governments, not the one that they had right then. So that's where I'm at.
I'll just say we have constitutional amendments for government to unrestrict them. But uh um I guess we don't have any, any further discussion. Is there a motion?
I'll second that.
So a motion by Veneman, second by Austin. And I guess, I just want to further state that I'm looking forward to doing our budget exercise because I think you'll find it enlightening. Um you know, our, our $40 million or so budget is made up of other revenue sources that are beyond tax dollars, um which we don't have changes over. You know, I think about, you know, the wastewater funds and the enterprise fund there and, and the revenue from there that, excuse me, makes up our budget. So I think this exercise and it, going forward, I think will be interesting just because I, you know, and Tom and I can speak that and Jay probably can too from our experience here. You know, I look at the street department, there was what, 80, 80 employees out there, we're down to 40. So cuts and adjustments have been made over the year, you know, when, when needed. Um and so I think a greater discussion on the nuances of the budget, you know, earlier on to help educate you on how that's made up and, and those costs are, that are in there, I think will be beneficial. Uh so we have a motion to second to approve item seven as presented. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick, uh I don't wish to restrict future uh councils, but I'm not, in good conscience, I don't want to set up our, our community and our government in such a way that it makes it easier for them to um go forward, you know, like not looking to restrict them, but I'm not looking to give them easy access to ways of going after more money from the residents, again, that live here. Not, not that work here, but that actually live here and are flipping the bill. Those are the ones I'm talking about. Those are the ones we should keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anything further? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried four As, three Ns. Okay, we're on to the Public Works Committee report held February 3rd. Mr. Austin.
HR.
Did we?
Yep. I was gonna say. I didn't think I missed one.
I was thinking that, that the whole discussion came from finance, but no. So yes, thank you. Let's go on to the Human Resource Committee report held February 10th. Mr. Bemke.
Thank you, Mary. The Human Resource Committee met Thursday, February 10th um at, in the council chambers at 4:45. All committee members were present. Um Alderman, Evenson report, uh attended remotely. A list of others is attending or is uh in the clerk's office. Uh meeting was called to order. Item number two was an update on the wage study. There was a discussion and no action was taken. Uh item number three, discuss and consider a 2022 general wage increase for non-represented employees of the city. There was a discussion and no action was taken. Item number four, discuss and consider for confirmation, Mayor Blazer's appointment of Derek Budsburg to the position of wastewater superintendent. Uh motion by Veneman, second by Evenson to confirm Mayor Blazer's appointment of Derek Budsburg to the position of wastewater superintendent. Motion carried three zero. Item five, the committee may vote go into closed session under section 19851E Wisconsin stats, which reads deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting of other spy, other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Um A, in closed session, the committee will discuss negotiation and bargaining strategy regarding labor negotiations with IAFF and WRPPA and may discuss tentative labor agreements with said units. Um B, the committee may return to open session or may adjourn in closed session. Motion made by Veneman, seconded by Bemke to move into closed session. A roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. The motion carried three zero. In closed session, the committee discussed negotiation and bargaining strategy regarding labor negotiations with IAFF and WRPPA. Um item six was adjournment. Motion made by Veneman, seconded by Bemke to adjourn. Motion carried three zero. Meeting adjourned in closed session at 5:42 PM. And with that, I would submit Human Resource Committee report for your approval. Thank you.
So we have a motion by Bemke, second by Catnall. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven As, zero Ns. We're on to item 11, reports of other committees, commission, boards, and departmental reports. What are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Bemke, Bemke, seconded by Veneman. Any further discussion on those? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. Uh we have, the motion carried, was that five As, one Nay, and one abstention? Yep. And we have item 12 is referrals to other committees. Mr. Austin?
I uh just wanted to let committee know I made a referral to Public Works um for $20,000 to fund a feasibility study of an underpass or overpass in quiet zones for the West Side Rail Line at the intersections of High Street, West Grand, Chase, um Gainer, and Seventeenth. I don't know if there was any more there. Um but this has uh obviously been an issue for quite some time. Um it's been something that uh previous councils have, have looked at and there's been no movement on, and it's a very important um issue for, for this city, for a lot of residents. Um it's, it's a, a quite a large nuisance as far as the horns are concerned and the proximity of some of the residents that, um on those crossings. Um obviously, the traffic backups that many of us have incurred with long wait times um at these rail lines has been quite an issue. And um the need for two fire stations because of this rail um is also something worth looking at. So um that is my referral to Public Works.
Thank you. Many, go ahead, Matt. Sure.
I'm just curious, do we, in, in referring this, my understanding is there is a bypass out on uh Grand Avenue that was built and that was supposed to be for rails to go under? That's still there. I guess, do we know anything about that? Or is it just something that we're going to touch with on the feasibility study if it passes?
Yeah, and I think, well, go ahead, Joe, because we were talking that. I think the intent was to find out our options with this feasibility study because this, this was, or at least money was earmarked previously years ago to do some type of study. And I think we're stuck in the mud and I think we need to do something to figure out our alternative. Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
So right now, we're talking about, you're talking about making roads go over the train at each one of those um crossroads?
We're looking at an option to at least get one outlet, I would say, would be the fiscally responsible way to approach it.
Yeah.
Um uh but obviously, the, if it's approved and whoever, whoever we have selected to do this study, um we can direct them at what we would like to see done and they can present it um to us, I would imagine. So.
We'll talk about that at Public Works Committee. All right. Thanks.
My bad then. Um any other referrals? Seeing none, we're on to item 13, adjournment. Uh motion is second, all in.